I'd like to call to order the December ninth, 2024, regular city council meeting. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk Deaton let the roll call show that Councilmember Dilg is absent this evening. Now I'll look for a motion in a second to excuse her. Councilmember Kurzweil.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to excuse Councilwoman Lisa Dilg from tonight's meeting.
A second.
A motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Move on to approval of the minutes for the November twenty-fifth, 2024, city council meeting. Councilmember Bogart.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to approve the minutes as presented.
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Moving on to approval of the bills for this evening. Councilmember Moser.
I make the motion to approve the bills as presented.
I'll support. A motion in a second. Any discussion regarding the bills? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Moving on to approval of tonight's agenda. Councilmember Moser.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion in a second. Any additional discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have nothing on the consent agenda for this evening. So we'll move on to public comment. Anybody wishing to address the council, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the city clerk, and we do have a two-minute time limit. Seeing none, we'll move, we'll close public comment and move on to a discussion of downtown with the DDA Director Nate Mack.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. So first of all, at the top, I just want to talk about the events this weekend. The holiday spectacular, the old-fashioned Christmas tree lighting, the events in the, at the Village, as well as the parade. Everything from the accounts that I heard went very well. The vendors that we hired for the event were fantastic. They showed up on time. They were, everybody was an hour early, which is great. We haven't had that in the past. And the Christmas tree lightings, both at the Village and at Heinemann Engineering, were both fantastic. So it's a really, it's a nice event for the community. People really come out for that, and they enjoy it quite a bit. We'll be hosting the annual DDA informational meetings next Wednesday, December eighteenth, at six o'clock at City Hall in this room, and there will be another one held the following morning, Thursday, December nineteenth, at eight-thirty at the Corner Social. These are done to comply with PA fifty-seven of two thousand and eighteen, which is the Recotified Tax Increment Financing Act through the state of Michigan. A quick update on the EV chargers. As I mentioned previously, there's funding in place, and they said they plan to start in the next few weeks. They're currently going to the locations that have been identified to put down some blankets or something to ensure that they're able to dig into the soil, because they need to excavate to get the two chargers in that we'll be getting. So hopefully, they'll be here soon. Looking forward to that. The indoor farmer's market was also taking place, or also took place, on Saturday, December seventh. There was a better customer count, more traffic there during the day for that event, so we were glad to see that. The first one was a little, little slow. It could have been the weather, it could have been the holidays, it could have been a lot of different things, so. And then finally, Waycaster Tiki, which is the tiki bar at two-two-eight South Lafayette, which used to be Third Monk Brewery. They opened last Tuesday, so they've been open for about, about a week now, and things to be, seem to be going pretty well. I stopped by there Saturday night just to see how things were going, and they said that they were completely full around seven-thirty till the end of the evening. So you do need a reservation to go there if you're planning on going. That's it for me.
Any questions for DDA Director Mack? Councilmember Bogart.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The chargers, what, what category are they?
Level two.
Level two?
Yep.
Okay. And I did, I also visited Waycaster Tiki. It's great. The interior is really well done, lots of details. I recommend everyone check it out. Thanks.
Councilmember Kivel.
I was kind of wondering, well, first off, that, that tiki bar thing, we would, had gone there too, and that was very cute. I was just a little bit, I, I think it would be helpful end up, if you put a, like a feather sign or something to draw at, at the intersection at McCady and Pontiac Trail, rather than in the, the bank parking lot, to be able to get people to understand, you know, that that thing is on at, in the...
The market?
Yeah, the market at the, the VFW.
Okay.
You know, because there's no, nothing that really calls you out until you get to the door, unless you're, you just walk, walk right past, I guess, the, the bank. But yeah, I think that something like that would end up being very helpful, though.
Okay. Sounds good.
Anything else for Deedee? Councilmember Hanson?
Yeah, I just wanted to make the, the comment that, you know, the events that happened on Saturday, the tree lighting ceremony, the events at McCady, you know, it was great to see a lot of folks that turned out for it. I mean, the tree lighting ceremony in front of Heinemann Engineering was really well-attended. My kids had a blast. I mean, they loved to, to see Santa there, and then just the energy that was downtown definitely passed along. All the folks involved, the volunteers, the folks at Heinemann Engineering, our thanks, because that event was just very, very nice to see, especially in a town of our size. The size of that tree, it is magnificent, as always, but those sorts of events, folks really look forward to, and I was, I was definitely very moved to see it yet again downtown. So definitely pass along our, our thanks and sincere gratitude, for sure.
I can do that. Thanks.
Councilmember Kurzweil.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would also like to ditto that comment. I think what I found very interesting on Saturday were comments that I heard from two groups of people. People saying, "I'm so glad I live in South Lyon. This is so incredible. This is an incredible tree, incredible events." And then the other group of people that I sort of spoke with was, "I am so lucky I found a house to move to South Lyon. This is my first Christmas, my first time being here in South Lyon and to be part of this." And, you know, I kind of sat back and I thought about that. You know, I, I've been here for a very, very long time, and here you have people that are just coming into the community, just relishing over how incredible our downtown is, and it really is. But I also want to thank Jeff Heinemann and the family for what they've done to transform that corner down there. That's a pretty transformative look that he has done down there, and the contribution that he is making to the DDA in terms of bringing people into the city to see that tree lit at night, or to see, you know, how big that tree is. They're not just coming to look at the tree. They're going to stop, they're going to stop in a restaurant, they're going to stop in a couple of shops. What Jeff is doing for the DDA, I think, is highly commendable. So also want to join in and, and thank him and, and everyone involved in, in putting up that tree. It's, it's becoming part of our fixture, part of our... I would wish somebody, you know what? In fact, maybe what I'll do is ask the Culture Arts Commission, we, we need somebody to do a postcard to that tree and, and get it out there, and I'd buy it and send it out for cards, you know, for next year. So just brainstorming. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks a lot, Nate. Appreciate it. Moving on to the fire chiefs' report with Chief Thorington this evening.
Evening, Mayor, council. Good evening. We're at eleven hundred and forty calls as of now. We did have a structure fire with Green Oaks last Friday, late, early Saturday morning. Went really well. We had the parade last Saturday was great, it was a great event all day long. We did have four emergency responses during the parade, but we maneuvered pretty decently around the people, on the cars and traffic, so it wasn't a big deal. Worked out okay. Our smoke alarms were all forbid. They came back this evening, so the next council meeting, you'll see that in front of you to approve for purchase. We do have assistance to firefighters. FEMA grant is out right now. It's open till the twentieth. We put in for an ambulance for three hundred fifty-seven thou, three hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars. And also, we are going to put in for ten portable radios, eighty-seven thousand. So fingers crossed those will go through. As you know, for the fire engine, on May seventeenth, we awarded nine hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars for a fire engine. In August, we were notified that five hundred and nine thousand went through the legislation for the House Appropriations Committee. And then on December fifth, we had a Zoom with Representative Slotkins. She is vacating her office right now, but it really comes down to the next presidential and congressional budget when they approve that. She's expecting that to be a, a short-term one to get through, end of this year, in the early of spring, before they really finalize the, the fiscal year budget went forward. So fingers crossed we stay in that and receive that as well. And that's all I have. Unless you have any further.
Well, great job on the, the other grants there, Chief, and like you said, fingers crossed on that down payment on that fire, fire truck. That would be wonderful, so.
Absolutely.
Any questions for the chief? Councilmember Kurzweil.
Maybe I could meet with you after the meeting, if you could give me some details on that grant, that appropriations...
Yep.
...that you received, and I will contact Congressman Barrett this weekend and remind him to take a look at that line and to make sure we get the rest of our money.
That'd be great. Absolutely.
Yep, be great. Councilmember Bogart.
The wired smoke detectors, are they interoperable?
They are. It comes with a little adapter.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it can be used with Kid and First Alert or any other wired?
So they say. If not, we can rewire it. It's not that in the world.
Thank you.
Yep.
Very good. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you.
Moving on to the police chief's report with Chief Baki this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council. Just got a few things tonight. In regards to the parade, went very well. Shout out to DPW. They did a great job getting the barricades ready to go, and we were able to set them up and move them where we need to have them for the parade, so it went, it went great. Just on Dorothy Street, it gets a little hectic there, but we were able to manage that when everybody unloads for Santa Claus and everything, but everything was, everybody was cooperative, and it went very well. We are currently in completion of a background check, and hopefully, we'll have another individual, candidate hired for police officer here. I hope in the next couple of weeks, there's a few other things that we need to do, but we're looking at getting him on board before the end of the month, so that's good news. We conducted legal update training. It's required for our accreditation every two years, so we're able to get the entire department trained up in legal update. That was, that's to maintain our accreditation. And we had today our first day of drone training, so I've, have seven officers going through the training, and we're finally able to take it out of the box, plug it in and look at it. It was in the training room. Lot of unique capabilities with these drones. Has the FLIR on it, has a two-hundred zoom camera on it. It can go out to like seven miles, apparently. Like, it, the, the capabilities of the technology nowadays is, it's pretty amazing. So tomorrow, we'll be taking it out and running it through its courses, which right now, it's charging the battery, updating the firmware on it, and then what, the officers are going to be taking it out and actually flying it tomorrow for a part of their training. After that, completion of the class, they have to take an FAA exam in order to be able to fly it. So once we get that training done, we'll start sending them to the testing centers for their, their test. And that's all I've got for right now. If you've got any, any questions for me.
Okay. Any questions for Chief Baki this evening? Councilmember Kurzweil.
Yeah, I have a, a quick question on, on the drones. Are, at some, if, if, if a resident of the city sees a drone flying around, how do they know that it's not a recreational drone versus a drone from the police department?
So your recreation, I believe you have to stay under four hundred feet for it to be operated by somebody. And then it gets into where it's being operated at. I, I'd have to look, kind of look into the laws as far as, I know there's some type of privacy issues if they're driving, flying drones...
Yep.
...into somebody's window or something like that. And even for us, we need to have certain permissions to do that as well, possibly even a search warrant. So I'd have to look a little deeper into that, but I know as far as flying the drone in public or in a park, I think it's, and I'd have to look at the, the laws, but I think it has to be under four hundred feet for recreational in order to operate them.
So the legal training that you took, I, I assume it did not include legal issues involving the drones?
So what'll happen is, we, we are currently looking over policies from other departments who have drones, and make sure that we're doing the, there's other departments that have already kind of paved the way for us, other departments who get other drones as far as, so now we have to have a policy. We have to have trained pilots who have to be mentioned in this policy in order to even fly the drone. With, with this type of training and the FAA certifications, basically, we're able to fly the drone unrestricted where we need to fly it. I believe it's line of sight, so we still have to have a spotter be able to see the drone in order to operate it. So if it's a large field, we're able to technically supposed to be able to see a little speck out there visually, but this drone can actually fly out seven miles where, be on site, where, and it can come back without, if it's, it'll sense if the battery's dying, and it'll come right back to you and come home, just drop right where it started. So, but with this training and then the additional paperwork that I have to fill out to, for the FAA, several law enforcement agencies who have drone programs have this capability of unrestricted flight of where we can fly it. So that's another thing that I'm looking into as well, as far as making sure that we have all of our policies in place and our paperwork filed with the FAA. So, but right now, we're just trying to learn how to fly the thing, how to even plug the batteries in and things, so. But it, it, we had it, we had it on today, and it was just, just the, you know, the camera function of it and all the things that it was able to do, and what the instructor is telling the capabilities, it's pretty remarkable, so.
So if I look up in the sky, is there, like the helicopters from the University of Michigan? If you look and see a helicopter flying sometimes around the area, you can see the University, U of M logo is stamped on the bottom of that helicopter. So you can assume that it's going over to the hospital, you know, doing an emergency transport.
Correct.
So is there any marking on the bottom of those drones that if I look up, I will see South Lyon Police Department or Law Enforcement emblem or something that would tell me that this may be a law enforcement drone and not somebody else's drone?
There are no markings on it to indicate that. There are nav lights. I believe there's red and green nav lights on it, so you see that it is a drone. There is a loudspeaker that can be attached to this drone, as well as floodlights, so we're able to communicate possibly with individuals in a field, in a, in a house. We did get that option as well on the drone, that we're able to attach this piece of equipment, but there are no identifying marks as far as, does it say SLPD? It doesn't have that.
How much weight are you able to carry?
That's a great question. I know it goes up to about fifty miles an hour, straight shot. There are attachments, and I'd have to look at the specs. I can get it for you if you'd like it, like to see it. But, but there are, there are certain things that, like I said, it can carry a, a loudspeaker and a set of lights. There's also a FLIR camera that's already attached to it. It comes with it as well, the infrared camera, and I don't know of, of any other attachments that, that, that I can get for it, but I can get you that as far as the payload weight.
I think the thing that I would be interested in, and clearly, I can't, I can't tell you how to do your job, I, I don't have that kind of input, but the one thing that I would like to see when it's completed is, I would like to see the policy that the department is using in terms of how they're using, whether, who puts the restrictions on the use? Is it the FAA, or do you, or, or, how does that work?
Sure. It'll be deployed at a need, at a need, in a basis, and I think in the policies that I'm looking at right now, it does specify when it can be used and how it can be used. Basically, obviously, if it's going to be for a search and rescue, or if we have some type of search warrant to, to FLIR a house or something like that, there are restrictions placed on it that we have to abide by. Again, individuals that have gone through the class and have taken the tests are the ones that only can fly the drone. I wouldn't be even able to control the drone. And, but what, what I've already kind of looked over and perused as far as looking at the policies, that there are, there are things put in place to ensure that we're using it properly.
And it has infrared technology on it, so you could actually...
It does.
...heat, detect if somebody went... Now, let's say that somebody is on Pontiac Trail, they're in the city of South Lyon, a car chase ensues, and you want to follow that car as it begins to maneuver in and out of neighborhoods and move towards Novi. Can you take that drone into the air and follow that car so you can tip off other police departments? I mean, can you use it that way and move among jurisdictions?
We, I mean, if, the only time we'd probably take the drone out is if we're called out by another jurisdiction. If, if there's a pursuit going on or something, as far as if we're looking for a vehicle, I, I, we would not, we would not have the drone fly over. I, I don't, it probably has the capabilities, but it wouldn't be the best practice. Usually, it's going to be the officers in the stationary area. There is an area to be searched. The officer will start the drone up at a home base and then send it out where it needs to go. That would be in a field, or a house, or, or, or if, anywhere was, would it be needed at? We could even probably use it for the fire department, and we were just talking about it earlier today, that if, if they wanted to see a hotspot in a house, they'd be able to FLIR that house and say, "Okay, the fire is over here." Now, it was interesting that you said car chase. If we are looking for a suspect vehicle, and we knew the vehicle just went into a large complex, we would be able to fly, fly the drone over and then see the heat off the car. That would allow us, okay, this car has recently been moved, so that could be something of interest for us to have, of that information. But as far as, when it comes to chases, I don't think it would be able, we would be able to, the capabilities to do that. It would be more of a, again, we're looking for a lost child, a suspect that's bedded down into the wooded area, or assisting the fire department, or if we had some other type of issue or detail for us, we would be able to use it then.
And will anybody from the fire department be trained on the, on the drones, or will they need to call you?
They would, they, they could, we, we are, again, we are discussing it, and if there was a large fire and they needed our assistance, we'd absolutely come out and help them out with the drone. That's why I'm trying to get, I'm trying to get at least one officer on each shift to be able to, to use that drone. Once we get it up and running and moving, they have to do, they have to have some flight time with it as well, every month, and then there's other departments that do training, and we'd be able to hook up with them and, and, and train with them as well when they fly the drones. So we'd be able to do that for them.
Okay. Thank you. Been very informative.
Councilmember Bogart.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand that in the past, you've been able to get assistance from Green Oaks Police with their drone. Can you speak about some of those instances?
Yeah. The one incident we had, as a matter of fact, they have the drone that we just purchased. Speaking with a couple other jurisdictions, the drone that we have is basically, the capabilities are, again, they're remarkable. They're, it's really, the technology is, as far as the camera and the way it works and the way it operates, and it's basically, it has avoidance detection on it, where it'll avoid hitting things. Basically, if you fly it in there, it won't go there because it sees it, and it has some kind of LiDAR radar on it. So we had them come out one time where we had an individual, a suspect, bedded down in an area, and we utilized their drone, and they literally caught them in two minutes. We were able to see them. So, and then when they zoom down on the officers, you can read the patch on their shoulders from four hundred feet. I mean, the, the clarity of the camera is pretty remarkable. So going into this program and looking at the other drones, I'm like, okay, I, I think we like this one. Where did you get it at? And so we did some research on it, was able to get it, so.
So it's my understanding that this is going to be used on an as-needed basis, rather than for surveillance or some other purpose?
Correct. Yes. Again, there's, there's times when, like, back in the, we'd want a canine to track a suspect or look for a person. Now we can utilize the drone. A lot of times, if we can get a, a ping on a phone in a, a general area, then we can, okay, let's send the drone up. The ping was over in this wooded area here, we'll send the drone up, see if we can't locate the individual.
Yeah.
So the whole, the whole purpose, a lot of it is that, that's what I've used as far as, when we were using drones, was either trying to find somebody, a small child, or an individual who walked away from the house that's not of right mind, or a suspect. Those would be when it was, would be more, be able to utilize that, that, the drone. So the officers, again, will have to have training on the drone, meaning probably monthly or by, and I don't know the exact, I'd have to look at the policy as far as the mandated, what they have to train with to continue to be able to operate the drone. So they'll do that once a month or twice every, or once every two months, or whatever it, whatever the schedule is, where the officers have to go out and fly it, just to make sure that their skills are, are still up while they're operating it. I mean, there, I think the flight time on the drone is around forty minutes, and there's a bank of batteries that you're able to swap out the batteries, so if you have to, if you're out along, if your, if your flight time is longer than expected, the drone comes back, you put new batteries in it, flies back out where it started from, and it goes from there, so.
I'm excited for it. I've had the opportunity to see a demonstration by Novi Police Department...
Yeah. Yeah.
...with their equipment, and it's amazing how far it's capable of...
Yeah, I was pretty surprised when they, when he's like, I go, "How far can this go?" He's like, "Seven miles." I'm like, "Seven miles? Okay, we're just gonna, I don't know if we need that, that long, but it, it's pretty remarkable, and they're, they're, it's able to, you know, it's got the controller and...
But getting back to my point, there's clear policies for how this is used. This is just for random surveillance of...
Correct. Before we deploy it, we're going to go over the policies, and I might even have our city attorney take a look at the policy as well, but that's one of the things that have to be implemented before we actually use it. So we're still in the training phase. Excuse me, then we'll go ahead and, and get the policy implemented, and then I have to make sure that everybody who's flying the drone is properly trained, and they're the ones that'll be able to fly it, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Kivel.
Just a quick one. First off, how, how fast can the thing go?
So I, line of sight, linear travel, they said fifty miles an hour. So it can fly that fast. Now, again...
Well, I'm, I'm just thinking, if you've got a ping someplace, and, you know, they can get out there quickly, that would be very beneficial, so.
Yeah, yeah. No, once it's, I mean, once you, once you deploy it, you turn it on, I think it has to go some, some probably self-diagnostics for a couple of minutes, or maybe thirty seconds. I mean, when, when Green Oaks brought out their drone, which, which is the same drone that we, we purchased, it basically went up in the air, and in two minutes, we, he was able to find the suspect. So it just kind of went up, did its thing, went over where the target area is at, scanned the area, and you're able to just move the camera on a gimbal, and it just, you could see him clear as day. Where other drone, we had another drone out there, and he was out for about twenty-five, thirty minutes and wasn't able to find it, find the suspect. So it was just amazing how that drone worked, so we were pretty...
Well, I was also happy to hear that it's got some kind of radar thing where it's not going to get slammed into a tree or something.
Yeah, no, again, that's why the training is pretty important, and again, there, there is a sport mode, and the guys like, the instructor goes like, "You don't want it on sport mode," because that, that shuts off all the, the radar and LiDAR on it, so you can fly it in anything. So it has these different sensors on it that will at least avoid hitting a tree or hitting a power line, or...
It's inexpensive.
It, it, it's very expensive. If I'm like, everybody's got to go through the training, per policy, and I don't want to break it, so, but it's, yeah.
Councilmember Kurzweil.
I just have two more questions.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Real quick, is, how do they fly in weather? Real quick, is, how do they fly in weather? Say there's snow, say there's rain, say there's wind?
And, and I wasn't in the training, I just briefly spoke with the instructor. So it is water resistant, it does, and there's, the batteries are heated. So if it's very cold, the battery has internal heat, so the, the performance of the batteries, my understanding, will not be affected or affected less than it regularly would be, so they can stay out on station longer. I'm sure there's probably some type of wind gust, but I'll be honest with you, I don't know exactly what it is, but they're, I mean, at high winds, I've seen them operate at high winds where they're still very stable. They have other, they have sensors in there that obviously will pick up on the propellers. It'll, it'll be able to stay stable even at higher winds. I just don't know what, what, as far as how fast the winds are going, I don't know, but they're pretty, it's pretty remarkable, and it is water resistant, so it does, you know, go through rain, and in the cold, again, the batteries are heated internal, it's got its own internal heaters in the batteries.
And the camera that's on it, does that camera have software for facial recognition technology?
I do not believe it has that, no.
Can you get that software and have it downloaded?
That's a great question, and I, I would have to talk to the, the instructor. As far as, I don't think it does. Now, that doesn't mean it can't take a picture and then we can send it to somebody for facial recognition.
Yeah.
That's very possible.
So you can work around it?
Yes, but I don't think it, I don't think it has facial recognition software in it, but I can tell you that it's very clear, and it can zoom in, like I said, it's 200, I think it's 200 zoom lens on it, so it's, that it's very possible we can, if we have to have, if we do have a suspect or we're looking for them, it's possible. But again, you have to see if they're unmasked, if they're looking properly up, up at the drone. So it's, it's a little tougher, but, like I said, the camera's pretty, they're good cameras, so.
Thank you.
So just in response to some of the questions that have been raised, SEMCOG has had two presentations on this very issue, developing policies from a legal and from an FAA standpoint in the last two general assembly meetings. So you can go to their website, actually, the city manager got a copy of the presentation from the one back in, I think it was July or whatever, but it's online. Just go see what they had, what the, the experts came in and, you know, advised people to do, what they've done for other municipalities and so forth. There's no need to reinvent the wheel by any means, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking over a couple right now that I have examples of, and then looking as far as how it operates and how it works, so, but I appreciate that.
Yeah, and the last time they did it was the general assembly that took place here in October, so it's, it should be readily available on that, their website. So, thanks very much, Chief.
Thank you.
We have no unfinished business this evening, so we'll move on to new business, which is the Nyhert-Gasby 7475 Actuarial Valuation.
Each year, we receive our Gasby Actuarial Valuation, and tonight, we'd like to summarize a report for, for the City of South Lyon for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024. This report represents the funded status for our post-employment benefits. Tonight, we've attached for you the Gasby 7475 Actuarial Valuation, year ending June 30th, 2024. Tonight, you'll hear a presentation from staff summarizing the narrative report. Patricia will go over the report and be happy to answer any questions you may have during or after the discussion.
Good evening, council. So I'm not going to go through it line by line. You know, we've looked, it's very similar to our past reports with the William H. Nyhert Company, but what I'd like to do is highlight a few things. The one, first thing I'd like to stress is that this report is based on fiscal year ending 6/30/2024. So this ends as of our past fiscal year, whereas the MERS annual valuation that we discussed at the previous council meeting, that was a date of December 31st, 2003, because they do theirs on a calendar year. So when reviewing this, realize that due to the difference in the measurement dates, the interest rates are much more favorable in this report than they were in the MERS. So there is a little bit of a difference there when reviewing it. But the actuarial assumptions include a discount rate in this report of 7%. This is a bit lower than the previous year, the 6/30/2023 report, which was at 7.35%. The assumed inflation rate is 3%, which was the same as last year. And then we're still using the same mortality tables, which are the same mortality tables that MERS uses for the pensions. They're the pub 2010. Those have not been updated yet, so they are the most recent and valid rates out there for, to review current public employees mortality tables. So the Gasby 7475 implementation, we started, it, it was pronounced and started in fiscal year 2017. The city itself, though, did not establish our OPEB trust until fiscal year 2021. Prior to that time, the city paid as we went, was the phrase. So we paid actual expenditures only for each year for those retirees that were receiving benefits at the time. So the city wasn't at that point paying down on our liabilities. So you can see that when you look through the report, that some of the earlier columns, there isn't as much data because we were not, especially when you go through the annual financial statements that were dated 6/30/2024, because we really didn't start funding our liabilities until fiscal year 2021. So in August of 2020, the city established the OPEB trust through the MERS retiree health funding vehicle. The state of Michigan requires municipalities, that requires of municipalities, that all full-time employees hired as of 7/1/2018 be included in an OPEB trust. It is required that an actuary annually determines the normal cost of these employees, of these members eligible to receive benefits. The normal cost is basically the minimum that must be funded to the OPEB trust each year. The city has decided since fiscal year 2021 that we will budget and pay over the normal cost to also include what's called an ADC, which is an actuarially determined contribution, and that is in this report. The ADC is a target contribution, which if paid ongoing annually, will provide sufficient resources to fund the future costs for the services to be earned and then the liabilities attributed to those past services. So for example, this year, for this valuation, 6/30/2024, it was determined that our normal cost was $6,240. The city budgeted for that past fiscal year and paid $73,600. We included our ADC as well as the normal cost. By doing so, now we're paying down on our liabilities. So for this current fiscal year that we're in, 2425, council budgeted that our payment be $78,400, and this was paid to the trust on September 27th of this year, so we've already made that payment. And so making those additional payments each year not only pays down the annual expenditures or the payments that we're making for the current retirees that are receiving benefits, but then we're decreasing our overall liability for future retirees and the benefits that they will need. So as you look through the valuation on page three, you will see that as of 6/30/2023, our liability was at $686,141 and was funded at basically 42.1%. But now, as of this valuation, 6/30/2024, the city's liability is $784,000, I think I added an extra number here, but I think it's 474, and was funded, with a funded ratio of 51%. So the liabilities went up, but we have funded it more as well. So our percent of funded has gone up, but we've also increased our liabilities. And the reason why those liabilities have increased it is that the amount of total active and currently employed participants in the trust have increased over time, and then the number of our participant, retiree participants has increased. So right now, we have 47 active employees who qualify for the OPEB trust, and then we have total retiree participants as of the date of this valuation were five. On page five of the valuation, you can see that those benefit payments have steadily increased over the past five years. This is due, again, to the increase in the number of retiree participants, but also in the increased amounts of retiree stipends. The stipends, again, are based on the class of employee. Different union contracts have negotiated different stipends when they retire, and so some amounts are higher than others. So the, the amounts are very anywhere from $500 to $700 to $900. So as we've had retirees in the higher stipend amounts retire, we've obviously had to increase on those annual payments. So you can also see that our net OPEB liability at end of year has decreased significantly since fiscal year 2020 because we've made additional payments to the trust. On page 19, you can see a summary of the active employees that are members. Again, it's 47 members currently. Eight individuals do not currently receive health insurance benefits through the City of South Lyon. They have opted out because they received them through other means, past employment, spouse's employment. And so they are not assumed in this valuation. So they are not included because the assumption is if they're not currently receiving the medical benefits and they, if they're not at the time of retirement, they are not eligible to receive a stipend. So then they're, they're not included in here. But what you will see for those that are eligible, a breakdown of their years of service, which, one of the things I want to highlight is employees with one to nine years of service is our largest group of employees right now. So we do have a, what I would say, quote unquote, young population in service years currently. But then the next group with the highest numbers is the 20 to 29 years, which is our group that will be assuming, retiring in the next few years. So we will be, you know, upping the amount of payments that we'll be making to those individuals. And the average age of our active employees is 49, and the average years of service actually works out to be 14 years of service over those 47 individuals. On page 31, you can see what is called the PA 202 disclosure information. That is a separate report that we have to give to the state of Michigan every year. We do that on a form called 5572. This is to place the city's data that we have from our annual fiscal, our annual financial statements, as well as evaluation, into uniform assumptions. So that way, the state of Michigan can look at our information, and it looks in the same format and under the same assumptions as every other municipality in the state. So they, so all of us do this. So it gives them a uniform assumptions, and so they can align us to see how we're all, you know, basically, they can categorize us all together to see how we are properly funding or not properly funding our post-employment benefits. So these numbers will differ a bit from what you will see in the audit, and they will also differ a little bit from the, the earlier portion of the valuation because, again, we're using these state uniform assumptions. But overall, the, the schedule and the information is basically the same. I mean, we're still showing it 51% funded, whether you look at the state's assumptions or our valuation assumptions. So we are ahead of what the state would like to see, which is 30 to 35% at minimum, so we're, we're well above that, we're on track. Some of the things that we also wanted to mention is that our liability is similar to the MERS pension liability and the fact that they took, they're doing it on a 30-year scale, and we're in the, what they're looking at is a 28th year until we've paid off that liability. And at that point, we'll just be paying the, the actual service member's costs each year. And let's see, oh, and is this, with the PA 202 uniform assumptions, it does reflect approximately 2.33% of contributions as a percentage of our covered payroll, which is, is actually excellent too, what the state wants to look at. So our covered payroll for the past fiscal year was $3,165,262, and only 2.33% of that had to be set aside for the OPEB benefits, which is good, because we don't want to be looking at 20%, 25%. So we're keeping those ratios under control. So I know I kind of went through that fast. Is there any questions? Hopefully, I can answer, because I don't have the auditors here tonight.
Any questions for Mrs. Ternan? Councilmember Kurzweil?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going back to page three.
Mm-hmm.
I'm going back to the total OPEB liability, and the explanation, again, for why the liability is increased in 2024 was because we have more employees now in.
More employees that qualify for, for benefit coverage, as well as we are making larger payments in the past year because we've had some retirees that are in the higher stipend category. And so when they project out, like, how many years, like, let's say they retired at 55, they're eligible for stipends to 65. So they're looking at 10 years of receiving that stipend, and if it's at a higher dollar amount, then that's, there's that increase.
So when we have, so if the goal is to reduce our OPEB liability by making additional payments every year, $73,000, whatever, am I correct to assume that that formula, whatever we've been using, needs to be adjusted upward? Because there's been, in order to keep up with paying that down, we need to understand how many employees are now in the OPEB orbit that we now need to compensate for?
Correct. And when we go into budget negotiations this winter, that'll be something that we'll discuss, is what, I'll bring the projections of what I feel we need to fund it to keep on track. So as you can see also on this page, that it shows how our assets had gone up quite a bit. Some of that was favorable because of the interest rates, some of it was because of the, the higher payments that we were making. So we want to keep on track with that as well. So I'll be looking at the interest rates, I'll be looking at our membership and our projections of what we need for funding so that we can stay on this track. So we want to, we want to see it trending higher. So we're at 51%, so hopefully, next year, at minimum, we're at 52 or higher percent funded, and we keep moving in the right direction.
Yeah, because I'm looking here at the liability, and the liability in 2023 was 397, and in.
That's the, yeah.
And, and in 2024, it's only 384.
Yeah, because our assets went up so much.
Got it.
Okay.
Any other questions for Patricia?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Before she leaves the podium, a further discussions regarding the, the budget for tonight. Councilmember Kurzweil?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Has there been any resolution as to how it is going to be handled with respect to the issue that we talked about regarding the budget, and that is the going back into time with the write-offs?
Oh, for, okay, yeah, for the cash bonds?
Cash bonds.
No, we're still working on that, actually. Plant Moran is coming out on Friday of this week to meet with me, to, was one of the items that we'll be discussing. But we're still working on that, we're still working on going back through the historical data. So that's still a project in motion that we're, that we're actively working on. But, but I will have more information as we go into budget negot, so we can talk about that at budget time and appropriately plan for it.
Yeah, because I really don't like seeing that in the audit report.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I, I.
There do I.
It's a ding, and, and I think it's a ding that can be taken care of, and I guess I don't understand, I understand that historically, you need to go back and take a look at that data, but if you can't go back historically because you don't have the records, and you've already researched and you've done your due diligence, and you're beyond the statute of limitations for anybody suing to recover for that money, why aren't we taking that final step and beginning to just write it off and be done with it?
Well, that will be the plan. The issue is, we're still looking at those legal ramifications. So, and to make sure that, that, that every aspect has been followed, that the, the sheet process through the state of Michigan, that we have followed all those rules and regulations, and that we meet all those standards before we do the write-off, so that there isn't anything that leaves us open in the future, where someone could come back and say, oh, we did that two years too soon. And that they could come back and have a claim, and then we would have written that amount off and then still need to maybe pay it out at the same time. So those are things that we're working on.
Okay, I just want to, now I'm going to kind of stay on that issue?
Yeah.
Not, not telling you how to do your job, but to me, common sense. I'm just saying to myself, if I follow the information that you have provided, I don't understand the delay in making it, but I understand the due diligence, and you want to continue working, and I'm just.
Taking a conservative hand so that we don't open the city up for any future liability.
But have you spoken with the city attorney on the statute of limitations?
Yes, I have spoken with her on that, and she has spoken with Plant Moran on that as well.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Patricia regarding the budget? Thanks a lot, Patricia.
Thank you.
We'll open the floor back up for public comment. Anybody wishing to address the council is welcome to do so. Please state your name and, and address for the city clerk. We do have a two-minute time limit.
I'll try to keep it at two minutes. Linda Ross, 373 Harvard, South Lyon, president of the South Lyon Area Historical Society. And I'm here tonight to thank the community for coming out to support our Christmas event at the village. 16 years now we have been putting this on in one way or another, so we're very grateful for the community, for their support in coming out. And I know it was a bit chilly, but as I walked around, I saw a lot of people standing outside, talking, taking pictures on the gazebo. They all seemed to be enjoying the evening. I'd like to thank the Civil Air Patrol, young men from the Civil Air Patrol. This is the second year they have stepped up to help control the crowds, so Santa had a safe path up to the deck on the, at the village. So I'm, and then they stepped in at the last minute because my Girl Scout troop that was supposed to help didn't show up, so they stepped in and helped at the school as Santa's elves. So I appreciate that. Santa, this year, saw about 75 children, which is up from the last two years, so we're very happy about that. It shows support there. The kids enjoyed it, Santa did, so I thank for that. And also for the holiday singers from the senior center. They had a full house. I went in a couple of times, and there was hardly any seats left for people to come in and sit. So I was very happy they had a sing-along. Everybody was enjoying themselves, so thank you, senior center. Also, the bake sale in the freight house was done this year by the society and from G-. Girl Scout Troop seven seven one seven nine. We brought in a little over six hundred dollars, and we split the profits between the two groups. So thank everyone for helping us out there. It was very enjoyable and profitable for both groups. Also like to thank the DPW guys for coming out Friday morning after the wind blew our tree down again, and for getting it back up, and for Phil to get the star on the top of it Friday mor, Saturday morning. So thankful for all of those guys. And also for all of my society members. I have such a wonderful group to work with. They are always there whenever I need help with anything, they're always willing to help, and they're there to support the community, the village, the society. So I very appreciated of all of that. Also, last minute thing, we found two odd gloves and an earring after. So if anybody is missing a glove or an earring, please contact us, and we'll try to make arrangements for you guys to pick it up. So thank you, and happy holiday to everybody.
Thanks so much.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Kenneth Michael Barnhill. I live at two sixty-four Winchester, and the only reason I wanted to address the council tonight was because I noticed, this is the second time the bond issues have been mentioned for the city, and I feel like a good idea for the city to avoid any sort of liability, maybe talk it over with a lawyer, be opening up a trust in the name of the Planning Commission, because the Planning Commission, I believe, is what was, the bonds were all opened under. And if you liquidated it all into that and just kept a record of what you still have, there'd be no way that the city could be tracked back for fraud because you're still trying to keep the money separate from open bonds. The only thing you'd be trying to do is close the bonds, and I can see that you're trying to do that for auditing purposes. So, I mean, if you were going to, that would be just one idea. I mean, far be it from me, but I just thought it would be a useful idea. Thank you, council.
Thank you. This time, we'll close public comment, and we'll move on to the managers' report. City manager Zolmak.
We are closing out the two thousand twenty-four road projects and working with our engineers to determine the next area or subdivision that will be reconstructed, repaved next year. We'll be making that announcement within the next few weeks. Regarding our cemetery columbarium, Allison and I had met with another columbarium supplier this past week. We're getting additional information together to assist in making the right decisions on planning for and placing the correct type, size columbarium within our cemetery, including planting an additional pollinator garden in the south, in the southernmost portion of the cemetery as well. The boardwalk project removal began last week. The contractor has begun removal of all the boardwalk south of Michigan Seamless Tube. This project, which entails removal and replacement of the boardwalk, will be completed by the spring. The first phase of the pollinator gardens have been tilled at Volunteer Park, and it was seeded and rolled this past week as well. Upcoming city council meeting, we'll have on the agenda the Public Act two thirty-three, or Clean and Renewable Energy and Waste Reduction Act, as relates to permitting for renewable energy. I'll be getting a letter to council describing some of that process. Also, the twenty-five twenty-six budget year, we've already started to work on that. Remind council, start thinking about what they'd like to see within next year's budget. I'll be meeting with the department heads over the next couple of weeks to go over their preliminary plans for the upcoming year. And last, tomorrow, Santa Paws will be at Pup Town between four and six thirty PM. Once you know, you could bring a dog or a cat food donation and get your dog's picture with Santa. And tomorrow, as I will be acting on Santa's behalf at that event, I will ensure that your canine will be giving healthy treats. So, behalf of any requests that you may have regarding this event or anything else.
Questions for city managers on this evening? Councilmember Hanson?
Not really a question, just a comment that I wanted to bring to the rest of council's attention. In the past, I had asked the city manager to possibly, you know, look into some options as far as energy audits for some of the city's buildings and possibly looking at grants for that. I'm happy to report, I had a great conversation with the city manager earlier this week, well, last week, I should say, in regards to the energy audit grants, and he actually informed me that he's been working with several staff members on DTE staff as far as having DTE actually do energy analysis reports for the city. It's a benefit for DTE because it reduces our energy consumption. They can make recommendations as far as energy-reducing measures that the city could take advantage of. And so DTE is actually, at no charge to the city, can be doing reports potentially for each city building and providing us with reports, and hopefully, in the future, we'll be able to take a look and see how in-depth they are. I'll probably be making recommendations to the city manager as far as the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six budgets possibly include some budget items to apply for grants if these reports aren't sufficient enough. But I'm pretty excited, and I wanted to definitely give kudos to our city manager for taking the initiative, working with DTE to not only look at improving our infrastructure here and reliability with grid, but to, you know, utilize their services and free report analysis for us. So, thank you so much, Paul, for that.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you very much, Paul. We'll end the council comments, and we'll start with councilmember Kurtzwell this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'm glad you're still here, Linda. Thank you so much for the contributions that you make over in the historical village. Great comments from people over there, too. It's just so quaint, so nice, and people just felt like they were in a Norman Rockwell painting this weekend, and you're clearly part of the pastels that go onto that canvas, I'll tell you. So thank you for everything in your commission. Next, I want to make sure that I extend to council a tremendous thank you for being so accommodating to PAC thirty-nine when they were here a couple of weeks ago. The Cub Scouts truly enjoyed their opportunity to be in front of council, they enjoyed it. Council was just so gracious, and the Cub Scouts and the parents wanted me to extend a thank you as to just how wonderful this council really is. And I said, "Look," I said, "It's a great team, and everybody works together." And they said, "It was obvious, it's just a well-oiled machine." And it was a good opportunity for the Cub Scouts to come and see how the government operates. They sent me thank you cards, because I spent another evening with them on several other matters. So, and they all seemed to put these little flags on. They said, "Well, we saw you wearing a flag, so we put flags on these." So here they are, the thank yous from Cub Scout thirty-nine here in the South Lyon area. So thank you, gentlemen, for that, and thank you, city council, for being so gracious. And last, I just want to say Merry Christmas to everybody and Happy Hanukkah, and enjoy your holidays, and pray and work for peace, because peace is something that, if you want it, we can have it. So let's have a great Christmas, enjoy your holidays, travel safe, and God bless everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Kurtzwell. Councilmember Kivell?
Well, it is, you had made mention of it earlier, that the idea that Heinonen putting this colossal attraction in our community, this little tiny burg has had a real history of doing things that no small community like this should end up being able to tether. I mean, between moving the train station from where it was into a park, I mean, the bike paths, I mean, we have just this long list of things that should have been way out of our reach, and yet we've still pulled it off. And I'm, I am delighted, and I can understand, anybody that, the couple that Maggie had talked about, it is astonishing that something like this could happen in such a small, little burg like this. We really are very, very gifted to be able to have what we've got here, so. I hope everybody had a nice weekend last week, and I'm hoping like crazy the rest of your holiday season is a great time, so that's all I've got. Thanks.
Thank you, councilmember Kivell. Councilmember Hanson?
Not much for me this evening, Mr. Mayor. I just want to wish everybody a happy holiday season, Merry Christmas, and a great New Year.
Thank you. Councilmember? Councilmember Mosher?
Thank you. I just want to say thank you to all of the volunteers out there that put together this last weekend. It takes a lot to put that on, from business owners to our historical society, put on a lovely tree lighting down there, all the events we had going on all day that takes volunteers. And I just want to say thank you, because a lot of times, you don't get told thank you. So there you have that, and just happy holidays to everybody out there. I hope you all have a safe and healthy New Year, and that's it.
Thank you, councilmember Mosher. Councilmember Bogart?
Thank you. I'd like to add my thanks to everyone who helped make this past weekend possible. It was great to see all the events that happened. Something that wasn't mentioned at the meeting was the holiday market at the high school, which was absolutely amazing. It was wall-to-wall vendors and well-attended. It was really nice to see. I'm happy to report on my birthday fundraiser, I was able to raise six hundred dollars for South Lyon Area Youth Assistance for the Shop with a Hero program. Thank you to everyone who contributed, and thank you to councilmember Mosher for another check for youth assistance. Just a quick thing, what is the best gift that you can give during the holidays? Presents, P-R-E-S-E-N-C-E. I encourage everyone to spend time with those who may not have as much presents as we have on a day-to-day, day-to-day life. And happy holidays and best wishes for the New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Bogart. Tonight, I just want to remind everyone about the South Lyon Eve on December thirty-first at Heinonen Engineering. It starts at seven thirty with a beer tent and entertainment from the dirt road to nowhere. So come on out and watch the ball drop on New Year's Eve. And while we're on that subject, I want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas, a Happy Hanukkah, a joyous Kwanzaa, or, in the words of Jerry Stiller from The Seinfeld Show, and I quote, "A happy Festivus for the rest of us." So have a great holiday and a Happy New Year, and we'll see you in January then. Thanks so very much.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
I need a motion and a second to adjourn. Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move to adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
See you in January.